Tom, she, Sean Gregory says he's having problems getting in.
Okay, I just want to acknowledge that I did hear that. I'll try and get with him right now.
The December 15th, 2020 meeting of the City Council of the City of Springfield, Illinois is called to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic
very public for which it stands.
one nation, under God, indivisible, of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk, if you please call the roll.
Will do. Alderman Redpath. I can see his visual, but he's not in it.
The clerk could call the roll.
Alderman Gregory.
I don't know if he can hear us.
Alderwoman Turner.
Here.
Alderman Fulgenzie. Alderman Proctor.
Here.
Alderwoman DeCenso.
Present.
Alderman McMiniman.
Here.
Alderwoman Conley.
Present.
Alderman Donilon.
Here.
Alderman Hanauer.
Here.
Mayor Langfelder. Mayor, we can't hear you. But Mr. Mayor, a quorum is present. Can anyone hear the mayor?
No.
No.
Hear me?
Yeah.
I hear you down there.
Good. Clerk, if you could please call the roll.
We just did.
Already did.
So who's all here?
Okay, Alderman Redpath is here. Alderman Gregory has just joined us. Alderwoman Turner is here. Alderman Fulgenzie. Alderman Proctor is here. Alderwoman DeCenso is here. Alderman McMiniman is here. Alderwoman Conley is here. Alderman Donilon is here. Alderman Hanauer is here. And with your presence, Mr. Mayor, a quorum is present.
Thank you. This time, I'd like to extend a moment of silence. I learned today that Pat Noonan, former county board chair for, I think it was over 20 years, had passed away on Friday due to COVID. He was responsible for the, working with my father when he was mayor, purchasing the county building and turning it into the city complex. So if we would take a moment of silence to recognize him and then also all the ill individuals or those that were impacted or have been impacted by COVID. Thank you very much. We'll do the zoning agenda first. The first item on the agenda is docket number 2020-046 for the property located at 1036 West Washington. Petitioner is Jessica Handy. Present zoning classification is R2, single-family and duplex residence district, section 155.017, with a variance of section 155.056, minimum lot area per dwelling unit to allow for a duplex on a lot containing 4,995 square feet of land instead of the 6,000 square feet required granted in docket 2019-036. Requested zoning relief, removing the zoning relief granted in docket 2019-036, returning the property to its former status as R2, single-family and duplex residence district, section 155.017 with no variances. Springfield-Salem County Regional Planning Staff recommendation is approval. The petition as submitted, planning and zoning commission recommendation is accept the recommendation of the Springfield-Salem County Regional Planning Staff. Chair, will entertain a motion.
Mayor, is it possible, can I ask, that we hold this until the next zoning meeting? There's been just some issues with the owner of the house. We still can, she does intend to intend to move forward with this, but just needs a little additional time. Is that okay? Doesn't have to go back to zoning or anything?
Is that right, ma'am?
Motion to continue for 30 days?
Yep, motion to continue for 30 days.
Thank you.
Has been moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you very much. And that concludes our zoning portion of the meeting. This time, the chair will recognize Treasure Busher for the presentation of the financial report.
Thank you, Mayor Langfelder. The corporate fund in the month of November had a beginning balance of $17,524,586. We took in total receipts of $8,838,817. We had total disbursements in the month of November of $7,308,203, which left the corporate fund with an ending balance of $19,055,200. This concludes my report, Mayor Langfelder.
Thank you. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the financial report.
So moved.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Oh, Santa's there.
That's right.
I'm really here. I'm not, no virtual about me. I'm real.
That's good. So did you get your temperature checked, Santa?
I had my temperature checked. I'm social distancing. You know, at the North Pole, I don't have to social distance. It's just me and Mrs. Claus and eight reindeer and Rudolph.
Wow.
What about elves?
So, you know.
What about the elves? One of the older city council members asked about the elves.
Well, the elves, the elves come and go, you know. They're there, they're at an important time of the year. And so we really bring them in at different times and that way we keep production continuing and there's very few needed. So it works out very well. But anyway, you're all welcome to come to the North Pole sometime.
Well, it seemed like COVID during this quarantine period, you lost a little weight, Santa. Hope you're okay.
I have, I have. I actually feel real, real good, Mr. Mayor, and I'm sure happy to be here. You know, it's interesting, as I came across with Rudolph leading me, some of the new technology today from the automobile manufacturers. I call it Rudolph technology because he was always leading me in the right direction, always keeping me on the straight and narrow. Now they've got technology in automobiles. They call it lane assist. Keeps you in the lane when you're moving down the street. Just fantastic. I watched it all from way above. You know, that's the other thing that I've noticed. I'm just coming in with Rudolph and eight reindeer. You got all kinds of deer out here. They're not reindeer, but they're all over the city of Springfield and eating all kinds of plants that everybody plants. So I don't know what you're going to do about it, Mr. Mayor, but a lot of deer out there, car accidents and everything else.
Oh, yeah.
I'm happy to be here.
Well, we're glad you're here.
Been an unusual year. Glad to see you all taking care of the city business.
Well, thank you.
I have a little something for everybody.
Well, we'll be sure.
I'll just leave it on their desk. Does that work?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Anybody have any questions?
If you have any special requests, any city council members for Santa? You left him speechless.
Well, they're all, you know, they're here. I got something in here. We always, we always have that problem every year, don't we? All right, we'll pass these around.
Very nice, Santa.
Thank you, Santa.
Well, they appreciate you thinking of them. This has been a very trying year, but we're doing our best to work together. Boy, you're digging deep for Gregory's.
You must count the naughty list.
I've been naughty. Looks like a special present.
It's also tough seeing through these glasses when you got fogged up.
Well, that's the quarantine mask you're wearing. We appreciate you wearing a face mask. We didn't want you to get a ticket.
I came down the chimney, somebody's there waiting for me. Said you got to have a mask on.
Do you need help handing that out?
Oh, I tell you, I might. We're getting there. Don't mean to take up too much of your time, Mr. Mayor, but.
Oh, now you're on the roll.
I think we're getting there. What's kind of heavy there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Santa.
Thank you, Santa.
Thank you, Santa.
Thanks, Santa. Thank you, Santa. I hope that was sugar-free.
Oh, wow. Thank you very much.
I hope mine's not sugar-free.
We'll share. Uh oh, that was a lump of coal for Corporation Council, it sounded like.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, no, it was candy bar.
Thank you, sir.
That must have been for Doug Brown. I think this is Alderwoman Conley's first Christmas with us. Is that right or no? Or maybe it's Gregory.
No, I was, Santa included me last year.
Okay, yeah.
Okay. Well, good to see everybody. Hope next year is always better. That's the plan.
Thank you very much. Merry Christmas.
And a Happy New Year to all.
Thank you, Santa.
So from Santa Claus to Bill McCarty, give us a financial report.
It's a tough one.
Thank you.
Did you say Santa from Santa to Scrooge?
I know that was you, Alderman Hanauer. I know that was you. Actually, I've got good news tonight, too, at least to some degree. So I'm trying to get in the Christmas spirit. Well, hello, everybody. It's nice to, I guess, not see you, but at least hear you out there. I do want to go through an update on our fiscal situation for this particular year that we're in. Can everybody see the presentation on your screens? Anyone? Can they hear me? Can you hear me? Can you see it now?
I can see it.
Much better. Thank you.
Blurry.
Okay, it's not just my eyes, it's blurry?
And folks can hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Well, we'll go through this pretty quickly then. So our latest revenue estimate for the corporate fund for this year is about negative 4.5 million versus budget. It could end up a little higher because of the, you know, with the restaurant situation, everything going on right now. A lot of that will depend on the duration, but we did get our sales tax numbers in a week or so ago for would have been the month of September, I think, and it was right about at 0%. So we're hoping that this is pretty close to where it's going to end up with only three or four months left. We should be somewhere in the neighborhood of negative 4.5 million. But given that, we'll go back to the things we've done. Two key things to deal with the situation that we have on the revenue side. The first thing is cutting expenses. We were very aggressive with cutting expenses once again, as we talked about last time. Right now, we're looking at cutting our expenses down about $1.9 million versus what we had originally planned to spend in the budget. And this actually would be about 2.5 million, but I have in here the presumption that we will, we, the council, will decide to move forward with the extra pension payment of $589,000 that was put on hold. So that is included in this number of the $1.9 million reduction in expenses. If you look at the overall corporate fund, the revenues versus expenses, the one you see on the right-hand side there in the highlight of the 4.8 million, that is the Cures Act money. That was the other thing that we did. We aggressively went after that money, getting all of our allocation. In fact, we're waiting on word. We think we might get an allocation of a few hundred thousand more. We should find that out in the near future. We hope that that happens. It's not reflected in here because we don't want to include anything that we don't actually have in our hands. So stay tuned on that. I'll give probably another report in a month or so, or actually, we'll be talking about budget probably in a month or so. We, if you go down and you look, what I really want to point out on this is, it's just, I think it's a reflection of the efforts of the, of the staff of the city and how hard we've all worked to try and get through this year. If you look towards the bottom, you see the highlight, the 679 that's down there. That is a favorable expected ending position. What that means is it looks like at this point in time, at this point in time, that we're going to end the year with a surplus of about 679,000. Again, this would be over a million dollars, except for I have made the presumption that the extra pension payment will be made that is included in this number. But what's so extraordinary about it is the simple fact that if you go back, way back to when we set this budget up, right next to that number, if you remember, we budgeted negative 1.6 million. We expected to use $1.6 million of planned use of reserves, as we like to call it, or fund balance because of some of the rollovers, including the police contract and the retro payment that had to be made, which was, was pretty significant. So here we are, originally budgeting negative 1.6 million dollars, and we're looking at ending up with a surplus of almost 700,000 with an extra pension payment of nearly 600,000 and of course, going through a global pandemic. So we're very pleased with the efforts of everyone at the city. Everybody stepped up and they've worked hard to make this, this fiscal year turn out much better than, boy, much better than it looked like way back in March, what it was going to be. The one thing I'll say is that next year is a bit of a different story. We're in the process of putting together budget and we'll talk more about that. But absent any stimulus money, right now where we're at is where we're many millions of dollars out of balance. But luckily, we do have at least a partial tool of some of the reserves that we could use to help balance that budget. Really comes down to policy decisions that'll be made by the mayor and by the, the city council when it comes to balancing that. It's just one extra tool that we have that will help, but obviously, we'll be looking at cuts to help that. There was, for those of you paying attention to the federal government discussion, I think a bipartisan stimulus package, another one was sort of announced that they're working on. It does not include any additional relief funds for state and local governments at this point in time. Senator Durbin, I think, was even quoted as saying that unfortunately, there's nothing in there, but they're going to try to keep working on it. So that's something that may come to fruition later. It's not now, and certainly, we won't include it in any of the budget projections that we've got for next year. Few areas of concern that we have, even though this year is turning out to be okay. We do continue to be concerned with overtime. So this slide here is our police and fire overtime. Our fire overtime, originally budgeted about a million, is looking at about 1.8 million. Part of that is a result of the COVID situation that happened about a month or so ago, where there were quite a few firefighters quarantined. With minimum manning requirements in the contract, we were required to hire back an awful lot of individuals. And we had, I think it was three straight payrolls with overtime over $100,000. One time was maybe even approaching 200,000. That continues to be a significant concern of ours, is the overtime in the fire department. It was large last year. It obviously is large this year. Even before the COVID and a lot of the quarantining, it was on track to go over budget by about $400,000. So that's something that the presumed new chief will have to take a hard look at and see if he can figure out and get his arms around that to help with our budgetary situation. Police, police isn't as big of a surprise, and it's not really as much over. Yes, a couple hundred thousand, but remember, we are down a lot of officers right now, a lot of open positions. And so while the overtime is higher, a lot of that can at least be made up with the vacancies that we have in the police department. Hold on, Director. I don't think the council members can hear us. Uh oh. So if you just wait a few minutes? Sure. Do I need to go back a slide or two, or? We'll find out. Yeah, they said they weren't sure what slide it was.
Mayor, can you hear us?
Oh, there we go. Yeah, we can hear you now. What was the last slide you heard?
They're working on it with Julia and Tom. Just a few glitches. If you just hold on, they cannot hear you.
Can you hear us now? Can you hear the council chambers?
Yes.
Now we can.
Okay. Do you know what slide was the last one you heard?
I think it was the fifth blurry one that we can't read.
Fifth blurry one. Page five.
Funds affected by COVID. We just don't know.
Yeah, they really can't see it very well. So you'll have to describe the slide, what's on there, if you could, please.
Also, Mayor.
Hold on a second. We're on the one with overtime.
Overtime?
Could we have the presentation emailed to us, please?
Oh, you'll get it. Sure, we'll get it to you.
Thank you.
It's no problem.
Is there any reason why we couldn't get it before the meeting?
That's a good question. Didn't they get it before the meeting? I'm just used to bringing presentations with. I didn't really think about it. I sent it to the mayor and I sent it to the clerk for presentation. I thought you'd be able to see it on your screens.
No, it's very blurry. We can't see anything. We can, we can hear your explanation, but we can't really see any of the presentation.
Yeah, I thought it would be on your screens clearly, like the rest of our Zoom meetings when people share their screen. So that's why I didn't send it, but I'll get it to you.
So that doesn't work.
Yeah, we'll try to email that to you. Yeah, we'll email it to you. That's no problem. I thought the share screen thing would work, but I'll describe it as best I can and then I'll send it to you. And then, of course, if anybody has any questions or wants any follow-up, you certainly can give me a call or shoot me an email. I'll be happy to talk to you. So what I was saying with overtime is there are a couple of areas of concern. Overtime is one of them. With fire, we're looking at about 1.8 million in overtime. We only budgeted about a million bucks out of that. Even before COVID hit, which gave us three straight payrolls over 100,000 here in the last month or two, we were on track for about 1.4 million dollars. It continues to be an issue that we have in the fire department. It was an issue last year. It's an issue this year, and it'll be something that I hope the new chief can wrap his arms around, see if he can figure out how to get that under control. It's extremely tough with the minimum manning provisions that we have in the contract. But I know that the last couple of years have been higher for some reason than what we saw. So I'm sure it's something they'll be taking a look at, will all be taking a look at. On the police side of things, it's not a surprise. They're down so many officers. Why their overtime is up a bit, although it's not as concerning because again, with all the vacancies, it does, that there is some makeup on that where we won't be spending out of the, the regular salary line. So I'm not as concerned about police. It's to be expected when you're down 25 to have a little bit more overtime than you had anticipated. And then the last thing I wanted to talk about, last area of concern are a couple of funds, which you probably won't be able to see. And I can't even get this thing to change now. Can you advance it? Is it stuck? Well, while she's doing that, you all can't see it anyway, so I'll go ahead and just explain what it is. There's a couple of funds where we're in, we have concern because of the state of the pandemic and what it's done to certain areas, especially when it comes to motor vehicle parking and hotel motel tax. Our Fund 21, which is the fund that, that we use for SCVB, for Scott Dolls Group. They're looking at, the original hotel motel tax estimate for that was about 1.9 million dollars, and our expectation is about a third of that, around $663,000. Now, to his credit, Scott has done a great job in cutting expenses, so it's not nearly as bad. We had 3.2 million in expenses or almost 3.3 budgeted, looking at spending only about 1.7. And luckily, over the years, we built up, like in the corporate fund, a sufficient fund balance to help us through tough times. So they're able to use some of that to get them through. And even though we're looking at eating into that fund balance by about 800,000, we're still looking at ending the year with about a million dollars in fund balance going into next year to help as we try to get on that track to recovery. And then motor vehicle parking, as everybody knows, we've had issues with that. There's been free parking downtown. We haven't been charging for the meters. On top of that, the ramp across the street where we get air rights, the hotel has not been able to make those payments. That equates to about $85,000 a year, give or take. So they're in arrears on that. Citations are down for obvious reasons. Meter fees, Fourth and Washington is down. Pretty much everything is down. So instead of the nearly $900,000 in revenue that was expected for the motor vehicle parking fund, we're looking at somewhere closer to only 300,000, about a third of that as well. What we've had to do is we've had to do a couple of things and we've subsidized, where we're intending to subsidize that fund to the tune of almost half a million dollars, 450,000 is the estimate today, just to keep it afloat out of the corporate fund. So we have the corporate fund that is now subsidizing or has been subsidizing Oak Ridge with the use of the 1% increase in hotel motel tax, but that, of course, is down this year, even for them, for everyone. And now we have MVP that's getting, that's getting subsidized to the tune of almost a half a million dollars out of the corporate fund as well. So talking about a million bucks for those two funds out of the corporate fund. That's an area of concern. Hopefully, things will get back to normal and we'll start charging again for the parking meters and maybe upgrade those parking meters to get with current technology and current times, and we can start making that fund whole again and standing on its own two feet. So that is it for me, unless anybody has any questions. Alderman Hanauer, you done your meet yourself?
Yeah, thank you. Last year, we, we got hit with a bomb on the, on the fire overtime. A few years back, we were told that if they brought in a class, that it would help their overtime. We brought in a class. I don't know how many people were in that class, maybe 10, 10 or 12 cadets.
I think that was in May, yes.
I don't remember, but we, we now, it's, all we're seeing is it's climbing. And I realize we had COVID, but it was climbing before COVID. And we got to get a handle on this because the way it's looking, we can't sustain what they're doing. We just can't. I don't know what's going on over there, why, why there's, why there's so much overtime. But I, I would ask the, you know, new chief to really, he needs to dig down and figure it out because next year's budget, I'm not cutting public works to, to help fire when fire can't keep their, keep their stuff in order. And we warned them. We warned them. We warned them for two years now.
I understand, and that's something we are certainly looking about and talking about. I can tell you, just for historical reference, when I started here in 2011, the fire department was experiencing overtime somewhere in the ballpark of what we're looking at now. The difference is back then, there were 20 fewer individuals. We had utilized a federal grant to increase manning by 20 individuals for two years, paid for by the federal government, and that's where it remains today. So we are perplexed as to why we're seeing overtime that's in line with what we had 10 years ago when we had 20 fewer individuals that were budgeted in the fire department. So again, we have a new chief. I'm sure that that's one of the things we'll be having some conversations about as we go through these budget talks. Alderman Redpath?
Director McCarty, thank you for your report. Are you going to make recommendations to us on how we can cut that overtime? I mean, there's only a couple of options, and that means personnel or firehouses or something like that. So are you and the administration going to come to us with a recommendation?
We are going to be, the mayor and I have a conversation coming up this week that'll be part of the budget discussions that we have. There are some things that can be done, but it'll come down to policy decisions by the mayor and the city council. And yes, there are options. There are options under the contract. It's whether or not the council chooses to move forward with those options or not.
Well, because I agree with Alderman Hanauer to a point that Well, because I agree with Alderman, uh, Hanauer to a point that we can't take away from other departments just to balance the budget, uh, the overtime budget that's out of whack. So I, I look forward to hearing your, your ideas and your discussion on that in the very near future. Thank you.
You're welcome, sir. Any other discussion or questions? I do have one on your projections. What did you project for November, December? Were those just projected to come in as is or? Revenue or? Yeah, revenue, sorry. Uh, we just, right now, we've, we had a lot of conversations about this. Right now, we've just sort of had 0%, kind of in line with budget. It's been all over the board since the big reopening in June. We've had a few months, quite a few months that have been up. If you look at the shaded yellow on the sheet, I mean, we had one month there in August, which would have been, I guess, was that June or May? I can't remember. Where it was up 13, or actually, it was down 13. Then it was the next month, up 2.9, up 1.4, down 1.9, which is, the 1.9 in November, we think is State Fair related because that was for August. So it's just been hovering around 0%. That's what we've got plugged in. It may go up a little, it may go down a little, but it shouldn't deviate too much from that based on what we've seen so far with the data that we have. Okay. Very good. Thank you very much. Next is a, uh, presentation from Jan Van Quellen with the Urban Forestry Commission.
She has it up there.
Yeah, it's up there. Can you see the PowerPoint, uh, council members?
No.
I won't know what to do. I won't know what to do.
You just hit that button to advance and go back. If it works, it's on, so you should be okay. So forward and back. Yeah, the clerk will help, help change those pages for you.
Good evening, Mayor Langfelder, members of the council. I'm Jan Van Quellen, and I appreciate the opportunity to update you on the work of the Urban Forestry Commission. Thanks to the teamwork of Jeff Ream, the city arborist, the public works department, volunteers, and the participating public, the UFC was able to make great strides in maintaining and improving the Springfield urban forest and the public awareness of the importance and care of trees. We are passionate about trees. Trees provide many benefits: stormwater, climate change, air pollution, energy savings, habitat for wildlife, trees add to property values, they contribute to the community's physical and mental well-being, as well as add beauty and privacy. 2020 was an eventful and successful year for the UFC. We are proud of our accomplishments. The single most important accomplishment was to build relationships. Each of the commissioners brings a different perspective and unique talents to the team. Nate Bottom and arborist Jeff Ream have shared their time, knowledge, and resources. We have also had the good fortune to work with Mike Brunk, the urban forestry administrator at the Illinois Department of Natural Resources. Mike was the arborist at Urbana for about 30 years before going to DNR. He has a wealth of knowledge and experience and has been generous with his time and knowledge. He has guided us as we set our goals and priorities. In 2020, the UFC adopted bylaws and rules of procedure, developed a tree plan, and with the assistance of Julia and city personnel, developed a website. The UFC advised and consulted the arborist Jeff Ream with tree selection and the fall/winter 2019 tree planting with parkway permits and about maintenance of downtown graded trees. The UFC presented educational programs at Lincoln Public Library. In January, Mike Brunk presented a program on urban forestry. And fellow Commissioner Dr. Amy McEwen presented a program about the value and care of trees in February. Jeff Ream has worked very closely with us. He applied for and was awarded a grant of 200 bare-root oak trees. We gave the trees to city residents to plant in their yard or parkway, and we got a great response. And Commissioner Randy Belleville has planted some of those trees along Stanford Avenue. Jeff did a complete rewrite of the Springfield Arboretural Specifications Manual, which was approved by the commission. Jeff prepared and submitted a Tree City USA application, which has been preliminarily approved. We are waiting the final determination. At the suggestion of Mike Brunk, Jeff applied for the city, the Tree City Growth Award, which is a prestigious award granted by the Arbor Day Foundation to communities that demonstrate higher levels of tree care and community engagement. Commissioner Susan Allen prepared and submitted an application for an urban and community forestry grant of up to $20,000 through Morton Arboretum and the Department of Natural Resources. This would be for a tree inventory. We received notification that Springfield was ranked number one in the region, and the grant is anticipated to cover the cost of a tree inventory of one quadrant of Springfield. The exact size of the grant will be based on the contractor bids. The UFC has recommended the city develop a memorial tree planting program. This will give people the opportunity to donate money to the city for the purchase and planting of a tree in memory or in honor of someone. Commissioner Rayanne Hawkins is using her knowledge and experience with the Parks Foundation to guide us as we develop the program for the city. One big disappointment we had, understandable but disappointing, was that there was no fall/winter tree planting this year due to COVID-related budget issues. The plans for 2021. The UFC plans to plant 500 diverse trees throughout the city, conduct a tree inventory of one quadrant of the city with funds from Morton Arboretum, implement the tree plan, apply for another tree grant, and if successful, have a tree giveaway. We will be collaborating with the Land of Lincoln Community College Academy of Lifelong Learning for the Sangamon County Big Read. The Academy of Lifelong Learning received a grant from the National Endowment of the Arts to have the Big Read. The featured book is Lab Girl, a memoir by Hope Jarren, who is a PhD geobiologist who has spent her life studying trees. So it's particularly apropos for the tree commission. On March 31, I will be a speaker at a Big Read program, Urban Trees Planning Policy and Planting, sponsored by the Citizens Club and the Center for State Policy and Leadership at the UFI. On April 2, Commissioner Dr. Amy McEwen will present Plant an Illinois Native Tree, Support a Food Chain, also in conjunction with the Big Read. Commissioners Ernestine Lawrence and Susan Allen are planning the April 27, 2021 Arbor Day Celebration at the Boys and Girls Club of Springfield. The UFC also intends to implement a memorial tree planting program, provide educational programs and otherwise engage city residents and students in tree advocacy.
Then, uh, Ms. Van Quellen, uh, do you have the document that you can send to the council members?
Yes, I have sent it to the council members because I thought I was going to speak last week. So I believe they have a copy of the document.
So if you could, uh, wrap it up, and then if they have any questions, they'll be in contact with you. And we appreciate the, uh, work of the Urban Forestry Group.
All right. I also wanted to say that the, uh, Urban Forestry, uh, Commission is asking that public works be allotted a budget of 125,000 to be used to purchase and plant 500 trees, to continue the quadrant-by-quadrant tree inventory, and to fund the Arbor Day and other forestry-related events. The UFC is cognizant of the difficulties of 2020 and that the budget difficulties will continue to affect the city throughout the 2021 budget year. And the UFC will continue to explore other methods of stretching the forestry budget, such as taking advantage of grant opportunities, and will help the forestry division implement a memorial tree program. 2020 has been a busy year. We have enjoyed working with the Department of Public Works and Arborists, and we would enjoy hearing from you, council members, if there are any tree issues or concerns in your wards. With that, thank you for your time, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Chair will entertain a motion dispensed with the reading of the minutes of the December 1st, 2020 Regular City Council Meeting and approve the minutes.
I'll move.
Second.
Been moved and second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council first reading of ordinances in the record of the city council meeting.
Second.
Been moved and second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Chair, uh, the next item on the agenda is consent agenda. The chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council reading of the consent agenda into the record of this city council meeting.
I'll move, Mayor.
Second.
Second.
Been moved and second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to place the consent agenda on final passage.
I'll move.
Second.
Been moved and second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The clerk will now call the roll.
Right. Alderman Repath?
Aye.
Alderman Gregory?
Aye.
Alderwoman Turner?
Yes.
Alderman Phil Genzy?
Yes.
Alderman Proctor?
President on 493.
Noted.
Yeah, yeah.
Alderwoman DeSanto?
Yes.
Alderman McMenamin? Alderwoman Count?
Yes.
Alderman Donlin?
Aye.
Alderman Hanauer?
Aye.
Mayor, 10 ayes and no nays.
Thank you. Uh, is there any action on any of the items held in committee?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Alderman Gregory?
I do got quite a few in here that I do want to take some action on. Let me see my notes here. My eyes getting bad. 2022-73, if we can, can we withdraw that one? Because there will, as, as I understand it, there will be a new ordinance coming forth to address the needs of that facility.
That's, 273 is.
I think that's the one that you're interested in, um, Alderman Gregory.
Oh, no. All right. Let me come back to that.
Yeah, that's the, uh...
Okay. I'll come back to that. Let me.
Okay.
If, if we can get, I think I got these right. Can I pull out 3, 2020, 330, 331, 332, and 333? For a vote for, I believe we gotta put these on debates. Am I correct?
Correct.
All right.
330 through, uh, 333. Is that correct?
Correct. Yes. I couldn't print my stuff out.
Alderman Gregory's making a motion to pull 2020-330, 2020-331, 2020-332, and 2020-333 out to, for the debate agenda.
I'll move.
Second.
Been moved by Alderman Hanauer, second by Alderman Repath. Hall in favors, or any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Very good. Any others?
Okay, I've, I found it. I want to remove, withdraw, excuse me. I make a motion to withdraw 2020-438.
And that is a motion to withdraw 2020-438?
Yes, I did, I did speak to, uh, her today, and they have, uh, made some progress on some things. Um, and, and they will be, uh, moving forward, um, after the first of the year with the new, uh, ordinance. And, and, you know, I totally was, support that. Um, I'm just trying to clear up some space. I do agree that there is a lot in here, and if we're not gonna move forward on it, I don't wanna, I don't wanna clog it up, uh, with, with my stuff in here.
So is there a second on that?
Second.
Second.
Second to, uh, withdraw 2020-438. Do I need to read that?
Yes, sir.
So 2020-438, an ordinance authorizing execution of sub-recipient agreement number 18-SR-0010 with unauthorized payment to Visions 1908, Inc., for the property located 18, or 801 South 11th Street, utilizing community development block grant funds in amount not to exceed $150,000 through the Office of Planning and Economic Development. Any discussion? All those in favor of withdrawals, say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Any other action?
That's all for me.
Any other action on items? Thank you very much. So the first item is 2020-330, an ordinance authorizing a contract with Linda Doe for the purchase of real estate located at 2008 East South Grand Avenue in the amount of $28,700 in closing costs and the amount of $1,500 and for a total amount not to exceed $30,200 relating to the Springfield Rail Improvement Project for the Office of Public Works. Chair will entertain a motion.
I'll move.
Second.
Been moved and second. To pass, any discussion?
A discussion, Mayor McMenamin?
Yep, Alderman McMenamin.
I'll just restate the previous, uh, um, problems with this. We've got, uh, no funds specifically allocated for this project. So we're really borrowing funds for the priority project, which is the railroad relocation from, uh, Third Street tracks to 10th Street tracks. These ordinances we're about to discuss have to do with the 19th Street tracks. I, I read one article, um, in our local newsprint maybe, uh, a month or two ago that talked about how the train freight, freightage on the 19th track, 19th Street track is way down. I, I think the, um, the research was that we're down to maybe four to 10 trains a day. So I, I think it's a mistake to start allocating monies on the 19th Street track when our, um, downtown relocation is not complete. So I'll be a no vote on all four of these ordinances, uh, for that reason.
Alderwoman DeSanto?
Um, I will also be a no vote because we are still, we still have houses we have to take care of in Ward 6. Two have been taken care of. There's about another six that still need action on those. And I, I apologize to Alderman Gregory, but it just, until the residents of Ward 6 are taken care of, again, I cannot vote for, I can't vote for this.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Uh, Alderwoman Turner, then Alderman Gregory?
I was under the impression, Alderman Gregory and I had a, a, a conversation about these properties because they are right in the middle of, of Wards 2 and 3. And I, and, uh, during our discussions, we were both under the impression that all of those properties that Alderwoman DeSanto was concerned about have been adjudicated and the property owners have been made whole.
Nope.
And, and that was the reason, and that was the reason why, um, they were brought out, um, tonight because that's, that was our understanding.
No, we still have, uh, at least six properties that need major repairs, that need, need some attention. So this isn't anything against your properties. I just, you, you have to take care of your people. I have to take care of my people.
Absolutely, absolutely. Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yeah, go ahead, Alderman Gregory, then Alderman Repath.
Correct, and I, and I totally respect that. Um, I really, um, as Ms. uh, Alderwoman Turner was stating, that we, we did have a conversation about this. I, I did believe yours was cleared up, um, from some of the information I received. I know the, the, the owners of the home, they're, they're nonoccupied right now. You know, so after some deliberation with, with Alderman- with Alderwoman Turner and the ombudsman of this whole process, you know, it seems like this will save the city money in the long haul rather than these houses being sold, redeveloped, and possibly have a higher price plus relocation versus nobody living in them right now, you know, and us having that in our back pocket for when we want to do that. So that was my reasoning, so, you know, so that's why I wanted to pull these out and take action.
Alderman Redpath?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but aren't these two different funding sources? One of the funding sources is done by some of the federal and state grants, but isn't this coming out of different fund sources?
Yes, Director Bottom will come up and give an update.
Yeah, that was my next part of my question, ask Director Bottom to come up and explain that, please.
Yeah, that's correct. They're separate funds. We're utilizing the various, the state money for state or federal grants that we have for the rail improvements project on the various usable segments, 5 and 6 for the construction, 3, 5, and 6 for the construction, as well as for the advanced land acquisition. We have the $40.7 million agreement set aside for the acquisition for the properties on the South Grand Underpass. The properties along usable segment 4 that were not needed for the project are coming out of Fund 95, however, at this time.
And to follow up with my question, I support Alderman DeSensio's support of her constituents in Ward 6, but we also have to take into consideration that wards 2 and 3 got the same situation over on their side, and I really think we should pass these things out. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderwoman DeSensio?
The difference is, is that damage has been done to homeowners living in their homes. That's the difference. I don't care what funding source it is, these people's homes have been destroyed, and they haven't been made whole. One that we passed a few weeks ago still hasn't been paid yet. The other one had to beg for her moving expenses. So let's keep it real here, and, you know, we're talking about, we just said these are vacant properties. I'm talking about houses where people live. It's a problem.
Alderman McMiniman?
I don't think we save any money by buying these properties. Now, here's why. We're not going to do any underpass or overpass on 19th Street probably for at least 10 years. So what we're doing is we're taking off these properties off the tax rolls, so we lose money there, and furthermore, we're shifting the responsibility, these are problem properties, they have not been taken care of. We're shifting responsibility from the property owner to the city to tear these buildings down now. Now, how are we saving money when we do that? Now we got to do the demolition ourselves. I think this is a loser-loser deal, and we should avoid these kinds of transactions.
Well, relocation housing payments can get extremely high, especially for these properties, and if there are a lot of people living in them, we would have to put them in, you know, better houses, so it can get pretty substantial.
So, Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Alderman Gregory?
I, whatever, we can take the vote, you know, and I respect Alderman McMiniman and Alderwoman DeSensio and their stance, but in the end, if we don't take this action, probably somebody's going to buy the house, fix them up, they're going to cost more, then we're going to have the relocation issue possibly that Alderwoman DeSensio is having in her area and my area, you know, and, you know, to avoid that, you know, I thought maybe it would be best to take over these homes and, you know, take action on them, so. That's where I'm at with it, I'm comfortable in voting on it. I respect you guys for your thoughts.
Alderwoman Turner?
You know, is there, this is a question for Corporation Council, is there some timeline on, is there some timeline on when payments will be made that we voted on last, a week or so ago?
Sorry.
And what's the holdup?
No, I think that both properties have been closed on. One has been, I'm sorry?
The one property has been closed on 6th Street, however, the closing is scheduled for late December for the property on 5th Street.
Okay.
And we should have the check here shortly, within the next week and a half for that property.
Could you hear that, Alderwoman Turner?
One was closed on, the other's still within a week or two, I think Nate was saying.
Correct. Definitely by January, by the end of the year.
Okay, and those are the, those are the two properties that we are purchasing, correct?
That's correct.
What about the ones where there are repairs?
So the plan is to work with the property owners and perform the various repairs. And we just, I know we just, we just settled with one of them today on the repairs, so, and then we're working with the other property owners to wrap that up. We've been in discussions with them, and we're planning on wrapping that up as shortly as possible. The one that we talked to today wanted to do the actual improvements in the spring, so that will be done at that time.
Okay, is there a timeline on the other five?
I'd like to get them wrapped up within the next couple of weeks, but I know it may be hard for the holidays, but at least get it nailed down in agreements with the property owners.
Okay.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of 2020-330 say aye, those opposed vote no. Clerk will call the roll.
Alderman Redpath?
Aye.
Alderman Gregory?
Aye.
Alderwoman Turner?
Yes.
Alderman Philginsy?
Aye.
Alderman Proctor?
Yes.
Alderwoman DeSensio?
No.
Alderman McMiniman?
No.
Alderwoman Conley?
Aye.
Alderman Donlin?
Aye.
Alderman Hanauer?
Aye.
Eight ayes and two nays, Mayor.
Thank you. Next item is 2020-331, an ordinance authorizing contract with Tyne T. Doe for the purchase of real estate located at 1910 and 1912 East South Grand Avenue in the amount of $30,800 in closing costs and the amount of $1,500, and for a total amount not to exceed $32,300 relating to the Springfield Rail Improvement Project early acquisition for the Office of Public Works. Chair will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second. Second.
Been moved and second for approval, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion vote yes, those opposed vote no. The voting, or the clerk will call the roll.
Alderman Redpath?
Aye.
Alderman Gregory?
Aye.
Alderwoman Turner?
Yes.
Alderman Philginsy?
Aye.
Alderman Proctor?
Yes.
Alderwoman DeSensio?
No.
Alderman McMiniman?
No, and recommend we do a group vote on the next two. Omnibus vote.
Okay.
Alderwoman Conley?
Aye.
Alderman Donlin?
Aye.
Alderman Hanauer?
Aye.
Eight ayes and two nays, Mayor.
Thank you. There's been a motion for an omnibus vote for 2020-332 and 2020-333. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Motion carries. 2020-332, an ordinance authorizing a contract with Tyne T. Doe for the purchase of real estate located at 1922 East South Grand Avenue in the amount of $21,200 in closing costs and the amount of $1,500, and for a total amount not to exceed $22,700 relating to Springfield Rail Improvement Project early acquisition for the Office of Public Works. 2020-333, an ordinance authorizing a contract with Tyne T. Doe for the purchase of real estate located in 1924 East South Grand Avenue in the amount of $20,800 in closing costs and the amount of $1,500, and for a total amount not to exceed $22,300 relating to the Springfield Rail Improvement Project early acquisition for the Office of Public Works. Chair will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and second to approve 2020-332 and 2020-333. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion vote yes, those opposed vote no. The clerk will call the roll.
Alderman Redpath?
Aye.
Alderman Gregory?
Aye.
Alderwoman Turner?
Yes.
Alderman Philginsy?
Aye.
Alderman Proctor?
Yes.
Alderwoman DeSensio?
No.
Alderman McMiniman?
No.
Alderwoman Conley?
Aye.
Alderman Donlin?
Aye.
Alderman Hanauer?
Aye.
Eight ayes and two nays, Mayor.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is 2020-494, an ordinance approving the appointment of Esteban Sanchez to the Police Community Review Commission. Chair will entertain a motion to place Agenda Number 2020-494 on final passage.
So moved.
Second. Second.
Been moved and second, any discussion, Alderman Redpath?
Yes, I'd like to ask questions of the candidates if they're there, if they're on.
Yep. I think Tom, if you'd allow him to be on.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, yes, we can, Esteban. Go ahead.
But I don't see my video.
Yep. If you'd give us a little background about yourself, and then that'd be great.
Yeah, my name is Esteban Sanchez. I am a resident of Springfield for over 30, since 1978, 40 some years. I'm an attorney. I worked as Assistant State Attorney, then I was in private practice. I was then an Assistant United States Attorney for 17 years, and then I was appointed to, as an Associate Circuit Judge for the 7th Judicial Circuit here in Springfield. I have participated in numerous community involvement activities. I have family. What else do you want to know?
Judge, could you tell us what your, what your plans are if you're a member of the committee, things that you want to see come forward for the Police Review Commission?
Alderman Redpath, I think that you will tell me what, as a city council, what it is that you want the board of the commission to do. I don't have a particular agenda, I don't have a particular thing that I want to implement. I have read the ordinance. I know that there's some discussion about, from other people, about subpoena powers, but I would like to ask some questions about that and find out what it is that we are trying to accomplish by that. But I have no agenda with regard to the commission other than to review those cases that come to us in a fair, equitable, and expeditious manner.
Are you familiar with the Illinois Police Bill of Rights?
Vaguely familiar, I don't know it by heart, but vaguely familiar, yes.
Do you, do you have any inclination to, I'm sorry?
There I am, I've been...
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes, I can hear you, I'm sorry.
Do you have any inclination to move to defund our police department?
No. No.
Did you hear me?
Yeah, he answered, no, he does not intend to do that.
That's all I have for you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Alderwoman Turner?
You're muted.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, and thank you for joining us. So I am familiar with a lot of your work, and most of that has been on the prosecutorial side. Can you talk to us a little bit about any activities or work that you've done other than that, that would, that would be more, you know, perhaps on the defense side, or is something other than the prosecutorial work that you've done?
Sure. When I was in private practice, I was a part-time public defender here in San Antonio County. For three years, I was a part-time public defender in the juvenile division of the court, and after three years, I was appointed as a part-time public defender in the felony division of the court. In addition to that, I was a panel attorney with the federal court, where I would accept appointment to represent indigent defendants charged in federal court, and I did that throughout the district, not only in Springfield but in Peoria and Urbana-Champaign and Rook Island. In addition to that, in private practice, both as an associate in the law firm of Casey and Casey, which is no longer in place, and as in my own practice that I had for three years, I also represented defendants in criminal cases, both in the misdemeanor and felony division, both in state and federal court, in appeal courts. Satisfy you? Satisfied your question, ma'am?
Yes, it did, thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor of the motion vote yes, those opposed vote no. The clerk will now call the roll.
Alderman Redpath?
Yes.
Alderman Gregory? Thank you. Alderwoman Turner?
Yes.
Alderman Philginsy?
Aye.
Alderman Proctor?
Yes.
Alderwoman DeSensio?
Yes.
Alderman McMiniman?
Strong, yes.
Alderwoman Conley?
Yes.
Alderman Donlin?
Aye.
Alderman Hanauer?
Yes.
10 ayes and 0 nays, Mayor.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is 2020-495, an ordinance approving the appointment of Sunshine Clemmons to the Police Community Review Commission. Chair will entertain a motion to place Agenda Number 2020-495 on final passage.
Been moved.
Second. Second.
Been moved and second, any discussion? Yes, Alderman Redpath, we'll ask Sunshine, I think she's on here, if she could...
She's on.
Okay.
Ms. Clemmons, can you hear me?
Can you hear me?
If you could, yeah, Sunshine, if you'd tell us a little bit about yourself, then we'll open it up for questions. Thank you.
Okay. My name is Sunshine Clemmons. I have been a resident of Springfield since 5th grade, so long time here. I live in Donlin's Ward. Full-time state employee, also have a part-time job, single mom, do some community work as well. Anything else you want to know, just let me know.
Thank you. Alderman Redpath?
Could you please tell us if you have, what kind of plans you have on the committee, and things that you're looking to accomplish on the committee?
Honestly, my only plan and thing that I want to accomplish on the committee is helping it to be as fully functional as possible by having a fully staffed committee and doing the work that is laid out in the plans that the committee is, that the committee commits to.
Do you have any plans to try to defund the police?
Through this committee, no. I don't even see how that comes in, I can't imagine how that would even come into play.
Okay. Are you for subpoena power for the committee?
If that's something that the city council grants, I'm open to that, but it's not, I don't think as a committee member I would have any say-so in that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor of the motion vote yes, those opposed vote no. The clerk will now call the roll.
Alderman Redpath?
Aye.
Alderman Gregory?
Aye.
Alderwoman Turner?
Yes.
Alderman Philginsy?
Aye.
Alderman Proctor? Alderwoman DeSensio?
Yes.
Alderman McMiniman?
Strong, yes.
Alderwoman Conley?
Yes.
Alderman Donlin?
Yes.
Alderman Hanauer?
Yes.
10 ayes and 0 nays, Mayor.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is 2020-496, an ordinance approving the appointment of Diamond Jackson to the Police Community Review Commission. Chair will entertain a motion. Place Agenda Number 2020-496 on final passage.
I'm moving second.
Been moved and second, any discussion, or we'd ask Diamond Jackson to give a little overview of herself, if you would, please? Hello?
Hello, I'm Diamond Jackson. I am, my hometown is Springfield, I grew up here my whole entire life. I'm 23 years old, so I'm quite young. I graduated from Springfield Southeast High School, went out of state to the University of...
Uh-oh.
Graduated my bachelor's about a year ago today, moved back here so I can continue working in Springfield. I currently work with Ameren, Illinois, and I do some community involvement as well. I'm involved in my church as well, and that's a little bit about me.
Thank you. Alderman Redpath?
Ms. Jackson, could you tell us, do you have any specific plans for the committee?
Just, you know, creating a unity within Springfield between us and the police department and other entities to create trust around Springfield. Nothing more than what the commission asked me to do also. Just working to try to amend and refresh the commission as well.
Do you support defunding the police?
No.
Do you, are you in favor of subpoena power for the committee?
If that is something that is granted to me and asked, I'm in favor if other people, or especially the council and the mayor, is in support of it. Other than that, I don't have any intentions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alderwoman Turner?
I don't have any questions of Ms. Jackson, but I do want to commend the mayor on these last two appointments. I think that it, that the appointment of Ms. Jackson and Ms. Clements add a very fresh dynamic to the committee. I think that it makes it much more, a much more community, community-friendly body, which I think that it, it should have been. And I, and it also adds a younger perspective and a, a, a fresh, it gives it a, a fresh look, and, and I think that it provides the city of Springfield a fresh opportunity to move this commission forward in the spirit in which it was intended. So I, I, I am in full support of, of both of these appointments for, for that reason.
Thank you so much.
Alderman McMiniman?
I share those views. I, I know the first appointee by reputation and background, and the, the second, I've really been impressed by Sunshine Clements in her activities the last nine months. I don't know Ms. Jackson, but I do agree that it's good to have some age balance. You're being placed in a position of potentially great responsibility, Ms. Jackson, and I trust that you'll give it your best attention and judgment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? Yeah, Alderman Gregory?
I just, I just want to say, I'm happy that, that we have made these recommendations. More importantly, you know, I, I think everybody, from what we heard on this, on this, on this panel, is, is open to any, any changes and ideas. Things that we will discuss, things, things that are not comfortable to discuss. I think, Mayor, you know, me and Alderwoman Turner, we had some discussions and other, other people, but, you know, since we're here at this, this, this topic, and, you know, we're asking some, some questions like that, you know, I just want to say, we're, we're, we're coming up on a time where we're going to have to discuss this thing. We're going to have to discuss what change is going to be made. I'm happy that we, we have added three people in that, and, you know, unfortunately, it's, you know, it's, it's not us as aldermen, it's, we have to represent our constituents and, and, and what we are hearing from the community. I think we just had a guy, you know, last week, you know, come up and ask us and have some concerns about that commission. So, you know, we have a due diligence to look at it and to make the necessarily changes that the community wants. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor of the motion vote yes. Those opposed vote no. The clerk will call the roll.
Alderman Redpath?
Aye.
Alderman Gregory?
Aye.
Alderwoman Turner?
Yes.
Alderman Fulgenzie?
Aye.
Alderman Proctor?
Yes.
Alderwoman DeCenzo?
Yes.
Alderman McMiniman?
Yes.
Alderwoman Conley?
Aye.
Alderman Donlin?
Aye.
Alderman Hanauer?
Aye.
Ten ayes and no nays, Mayor.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is 2020-497, an ordinance approving the appointment of Brandon Blough as Fire Chief to the Springfield Fire Department. The Chair will entertain a motion to place Agenda number 2020-497 on final passage.
So moved, Mayor.
Second.
Second.
Been moved in second. Any discussion? Alderman Redpath?
Is the chief up at the podium or listening?
Yes, he's coming.
I'm here.
Yep, go ahead.
Chief, can you hear me okay?
I can.
Chief, you've heard tonight about the situation with the overtime that we're really concerned with, with the fire department. It's a, you're, you're stepping into a pair of shoes that are going to be hard to fill. Chief Rainey was tough, and he's done a pretty good job there, and I know your reputation, I feel comfortable that you'll do a good job, but this is a serious issue for us to consider, because it could mean personnel, could mean firehouses, if we don't get the overtime situation under control. I strongly advocate and ask you to put, put your heads together with your command staff to try to figure out how we can bring this overtime situation down, because if not, it's, if it falls back to the city council during the budget time and we find out that we can't make it, it's going to be some real tough, real tough decisions that we have to make, and, and we don't want to, Chief, because I can tell you, speaking for myself and probably nine other aldermen, we support the police and fire department, and we want to make sure that you're successful, but we have to get our, we have to get this overtime thing under control.
That's understood, and I've had conversations already with Chief Rainey about what, what types of things we need to look at. Obviously, this year is an aberration in that we had, you know, as many as seventy-three people off at one point for, for COVID, and that brought that in. And I understand that, you know, in years past, that, that there has been a few years where we've gone over budget in the overtime portion of the, of the budget. I need, what I would like to do, kind to, kind of to Director McCarty's point, is go back maybe even a little further, going back to, you know, 2010, 2011. I would like to see what kind of percentages of overtime that we were running at that point, and try and see if there were some, some techniques that, that perhaps one of the other chiefs that used, may have used that, that could be put back in place, and we could get it back to where we want it to be.
So, so to follow up with that, we have an ordinance setting on, in the, on the, in the committee that pays an extra pension payment to both police and fire pensions. If we're going to be strapped with a major overtime situation, I'm going to have to reconsider my vote on that, because I, I don't think that we should be putting money into the pension system if we have to pay the enormous amount of overtime. So I don't want to do that, because we, again, we do support the fire and police, but we have to make tough decisions, and we're going to have some financial issues in the next year, next two years that we're going to have to deal with. So please do your best, and congratulations on your appointment, and I will be supporting you.
Thank you, Alderman.
Any other questions? Alderman McMiniman, then Alderwoman Conley and Turner, and then Donlin.
Well, if I just heard Alderman Redpath correctly, I think he's saying that unless we get the, the overtime fixed out, we can't put money into the, the additional payment of the pension. I think that's, is that correct? Is that what you said, Alderman Redpath?
As far as I'm concerned, I won't vote for it.
Well, I, I understand the thought behind that, but... Let me back up. Chief, to be, Blough and I had a good conversation this afternoon, ran about thirty minutes. We talked about police and fire pensions, and the real bottom line on, from my point of view of that discussion was, we cannot have a healthy fire department. We cannot have a healthy, a financially healthy fire department unless we have a financially healthy city. So the, the fixing of the, the pension is kind of like fixing the overtime. We can't have a healthy, we can't build new firehouses, we can't buy new rigs, we can't do this and that unless the finances are there. So Chief Blough and I, we kind of reviewed the, the recent history. So ten years ago, in, and he, I think he confirmed these numbers, our police and fire debt was two hundred million, and now it's four hundred million. And, you know, some, like our budget director, he says, oh, don't worry about that, we'll just ramp it out, we'll ramp it out. When the people say, let's ramp it out, that's like saying, let's have a forty-year mortgage instead of a, a twenty-year mortgage. But here's what happened. The last time the state of Illinois ramped out the pensions was ten years ago. They ramped it out from nine, from 2032 to 2040. And I know a lot of you folks on the council don't know what I'm talking about, maybe, but we really need to know this good and hard and fast. They ramped it out trying to give relief, and guess what happened? Our debt doubled. So I don't expect.
True, our debt doubled because of the pensions.
I don't expect anything different to happen this next time they ramp it out, because the real solution and cure is to have a realistic rate of return assumption. And I know now that we've shifted the, the local pensions to a state-level board, but the, the, the real solution, and I know, you know, in the past, Alderman Hanauer says, you know, give us a solution, give us a solution, solution, et cetera, et cetera. The solution is, we need more revenue, hopefully in combination with some payroll restraint. And I have offered ideas on new revenue. The problem is, the council doesn't like these ideas. So, you know, we can, just think about this. The pension debt was two hundred million ten years ago, now it's four hundred million. That's, that's two hundred million increase, right? Over ten years. That's at the rate of twenty million dollars a year. Now, people say, now how's that affecting our budget? Well, it affects our budget because more and more of our corporate fund has to be put into the pension. So if you go back ten years, we're putting in roughly seventeen million dollars from our corporate fund as the city's contribution to police and fire, and now we're up at thirty-two million. So what happens is, when your, your city contribution to the pensions increases, it takes away available funds for other purposes, and that's what our real dilemma is here. I'll reintroduce my ordinance again, like I have the last two years. It's really a planning ordinance. It just says, let's figure out how much we'd have to pay into the pensions if we had a realistic rate of return assumption, and, and it gives us a year to think it through. And, you know, we all love Springfield, let's prove it. Let's prove that we're not going to pass on this debt to the next generation. I'm very impressed by what Peoria is doing. And, you know, unfortunately, you know, as the SGR grows slimmer and slimmer, we don't hear about what some of our other cities are doing, but a couple of years ago, they, they passed a new tax to dedicate it to the public safety pensions, and now, last week, they passed an ordinance to have a referendum on the question of what additional revenue they should devote to their police and fire pension fund. It'll be on the April 2021 ballot up in Peoria. So other municipalities are doing a lot, and Mayor, I do respect what you tried to do with the, if our reserves get to greater, you know, grow enough, then we can take a slice out of that and put it towards our pensions. Unfortunately, unfortunately, number one, it wasn't enough, but it was, at least it was something. And then what happens is, our city council comes around and says, well, you know, let's just worry about that down the road. That's what we've been doing for twenty years, and that's the wrong approach, and I hope we get called out on it. I really do, because we have to be accountable for what we're doing to the, the city that we love. We can't just bury ourselves in debt, because basically, ultimately, it leads to throwing more taxation on the next generation and reducing services from the next generation. It's wrong, and I'll be speaking about it till I leave this council. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Alderwoman Conley?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I do not have a pension comment at this time.
Glad to hear it.
Chief Blough, I, I just wanted to thank you. You were handed a fairly hot potato last week with our, our tent situation, and I appreciate your willingness to work with the, the community and provide some flexibility to our businesses that are, are trying to do the right thing and, and continue to stay open. So I appreciate that. I obviously, when people would come and complain to me, I said, you know, we do want a fire department that focuses on safety. That's, that's a critical component for us. Springfield gets a lot of benefits from having such a high-quality fire department, a fire department where we have not seen ma, massive disaster-level fires in, I, I don't even know how long since I've lived here, and I appreciate that. I know that we see, we see benefits to that in our personal insurance rates, because we have such a highly-rated fire department. And I understand you do balance a lot of, you have a lot of balancing to do. I'm hoping Chief Rainey will maybe take your calls every now and then, if you, if you need any, if you have any questions. One question I do have for you, though, about your staffing, it's my understanding, and I may be wrong, correct me, there is a military hiring preference for, for firefighters, is that correct?
That is correct.
And I was just wondering, do you have many, many of your members who are also active members of the National Guard, or, I mean, is part of our, our overtime situation, are we dealing with, with deployment issues?
We, we do, and they are. We've had a high number of the people. Twenty years ago, when we had people who were in the National Guard or in the reserves, they were perhaps sent off, you know, deployed for months at a time, sometimes as much as a year, but they might be, they might be, they might be deployed for a, a year, one time in their career. We have, we have some of our military guys, and we definitely don't knock them for this, but some of them are literally deployed every other year. We've had, we've had some, some people who have been, been deployed for ten to twelve months, three times in a five-year period. So when you have to, and, and it seems like, for one reason or another, those are some of our high flyers, no pun intended, because a lot of them are, they're helicopter guys, but they, on top of it, they are captains, they are the, they are the guys who are a little higher up the food chain. So in addition, you're paying to replace somebody that is a little bit higher, higher payment to, when we have hireback, hireback to, to fill those slots. So we do have, I don't know off the top of my head how many military people, my guess would be between fifteen and twenty. All of them have annual, at least two weeks every year that they have commitments that they're going to go, and like I said, most of them, it seems like, get deployed, you know, every couple, three years, and most of them for ten months at a time, and we had, you know, several this year. So on top of the COVID, that doesn't help either.
Yeah, and, and of course, everything from this last year has a COVID asterix next to it, so, and I think we need to, to keep that in mind. And I, and I realize the police department has a similar situation in dealing with active-duty members who, who are deployed. This, this certainly argues, or at least puts forward the concept, that we, we do need to continue to have strong recruitment and, and hiring, and, you know, with that in mind, I hope that we do continue that. I'd like to see that really pushed within our own city with, with, with citizens who come from Springfield and have them work in Springfield in, in a very, you know, a quality, quality profession. So, and, and of course, you've already mentioned that you, you know, this is, this is a, a plan of yours, and you're going to keep working on it. So thank you for that. Thank you for showing some flexibility and continuing to work with our businesses, and look forward to working with you in the coming years. Thank you.
My pleasure. Alderwoman Turner?
Congratulations on, on your appointment. I'm, I'm excited for what that's going to mean for our city. I have the utmost respect for the police department and the fire department, and the men and women who, who are included in, in that department. During my first year as an alder person, I participated in an exercise where you actually participated in fire, different fire activities that the department go through, and it was very, very eye-opening, and a lot of it, you have no idea, the, the, the stressful situations and, and the danger and, and what all is involved with it. And so it was very, very eye-opening for me, and, and really ramped up the respect that I have for the men and women in the, in the fire department. I'm also excited that you are very open to new ideas and innovation and community input regarding recruitment. We had that discussion last week, and, and we had a follow-up discussion, and I'm, I'm excited. I'm very excited about that. After last... After last week's city council meeting, there was a a couple of news articles about it. And I will tell you, a lot of the social media comments were were very nasty, intimidating, and and quite frankly, very racist in nature. And and a lot of the comments ended with, what does it matter who goes to fight a fight a fire? So I commend you for understanding why it matters and why it matters to the city of Springfield. And I look forward to working with you on all of those different aspects. So thank you again for, like I said, your openness to new ideas and innovation regarding recruitment. And I'm quite sure that all of that will transfer into how you go about your duties as the new chief. So I'm excited.
Me too. Thank you.
Alderman Donlin.
Thank you, Mayor. I must say, first, I'm having difficulty with my internet connection, so if I do lose you, I'm going to switch to my cell phone. But Chief, I just want to wish you all the best in your next endeavor. I absolutely intend on supporting you and think you'll do a wonderful job for the department. It's an important job. I don't need to tell you that, but we all know that for the city. I did want to ask a couple of questions regarding the budget itself. Last year, I recall us from it was a carryover earlier this fiscal year, we had a massive supplemental appropriation for overtime. What was that amount? You for this?
I don't have that number in front of me. I thought that it was 600,000. That's what the that's what Chief Rainey Rainey just told me. I'd be more than happy to call him up here to answer any questions about that.
You are correct.
Good answer. Good answer.
Well, anyway, $600,000. We learned about it after the after the fiscal year had already ended. We just learned how to report today in the fourth quarter of this fiscal year, there were going to be 1.8 million in the negative. What I would like you to consider and do is, from now on, as we go throughout our fiscal year, if we can have regular reports on where we are, rather than hearing about we're almost $2 million in a negative in the line in quarter four of the fiscal year.
I can provide that to you. We actually, Reggie Carbonell, who works in our office, provides that information to us on a monthly basis, and I'd be more than happy to make sure that that's distributed to everybody who wants to wants to get it.
That'd be great. I'm well aware that it's available. I'm well aware of budgets all over that on a daily basis. You have good budget staff. And and I just think it's important that here we are again, and it's no fault of yours because you weren't the chief, but here we are again, and at the end of the year, and we're learning that we have a major problem in a budget line. Thank you. And all the best.
Thank you.
Alderman Hanauer.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Chief, thanks again for your efforts last week with the with the whole tent situation. It was I know how frustrating it was for for me and some of the other aldermen out, you know, on the up here, but I know it was frustrating for you as well. Having stepped into that, I commented to you that that Chief Rainey was probably sitting at home laughing that he he left it a good point. So you
Not probably.
He definitely owes you for that.
Yes, he does.
I echo what Alderman Donlin has said about the overtime. I also would like to make sure that we're watching to make sure to see who's getting it all and getting a lot of it and, you know, that we're not not padded for retirement, quite frankly. I think that I think that, you know, Alderman Redpath, right, it's hard to put money towards pension when we're having to take an extra million dollars out that we could put put more money towards it. And I think that's what I'm not talking for Chuck, but I think that's kind of what he alluded to, the money we we could put towards it, we're going to have to throw towards extra, you know, an extra million dollars towards the pensions. So, I mean, towards the overtime. So I think that that the unions have to understand, they want us to put more money in, but but they have to figure out a way, you guys got to work together to figure out a way to solve this problem. And the resolution isn't add more money during the budget for it. You know, like I said, a couple of years away, a couple of years back, we were told that that the new fire, the new cadets coming in would alleviate the overtime. Well, it hasn't. It's just, in a sense, escalated. So there's definitely an issue. So once again, this is a tough call for you, and you're going to have to, you know, I'm sure you'll be able to do something to alleviate it, but it isn't it is important. And, you know, to the guys that are that are in that are firefighters, you guys do a great job. The the whole department does a great job. I was on the scene of a fire that unfortunately, a friend of mine's house caught fire, and and I they were they were they were excellent. I mean, just top notch. They were caring about the people, their their contents in the house and all that. They did a they did an insanely, insanely great job.
Oh, sister, I got
Doris, you're on, you're not muted.
Free to power out.
So so anyway, I just wanted to tell I wanted to thank them. They did a great job in that situation, I know, and all the other situations. But we do have to get this overtime under control. As far as the pensions go, you know, Alderman McMiniman has said in the past that it's it's the it's, you know, it's it's the council's response fault that this is like this. Keep in mind that the pensions, I believe, when when Alderman Redpath was on before 9/11, I believe we were at 70 or 80% funding, and the legislature with one one vote doubled or cut it in half by by changing the actuary numbers, you know, to where they they allowed the wives to take part of their pensions. That was all during 9/11. And that that really knocked us into a loop. And the result of that is is why this thing's escalated to the point it is. As far as the ramp, that's why that's why the ramp got all screwed up. I was at the state when they did that, when they redid the ramp. And and that was that was one of the problems because of the the change the legislators made. So I'll look forward to to Alderman McMiniman bringing something forward, probably the largest tax increase in the history of the city of Springfield. And I'm sure that the residents of Ward 10 will let me know how they feel about. So and I will, as always, vote their way they want.
Alderman McMiniman.
You know, we can't undo the past, Alderman Hanauer.
Well, then quit bringing it up.
The past is you had your chance, now you have to listen like I listened to you. But we have a responsibility to fix the problems that were created by others. And by the way, your understanding of what's happened the last 25 years is to say, to put it mildly, is incomplete. And the the biggest continuing cause of our underfunding is the rate of return assumption that we continue to use. And, you know, I wish I didn't have a crystal ball, but the facts are, Alderman Hanauer, and I wish I wasn't right, but I've been right for 10 years, to vote against a budget for 10 years that unbalances our debt severely, and to continue to say that the rate of return assumption is false, it's unreasonable, and it's piling a bunch of debt on the next generation. So if you feel comfortable pushing it to the next generation, fine, but I don't feel comfortable with that. And that's the bottom line.
Alderman Hanauer.
Just to follow up on that, I appreciate I appreciate you voting no on the budget, Joe, but you have no problem taking the services for Ward 7. If you want to put money, more money towards the pension, I'm sure we can we'll be happy to take it out of Ward 7's, you know, stuff and, you know, but you you keep talking, bring the tax increase forward. You say it's the mayor's responsibility. Any of us can bring something forward. And you know it's going to be the largest tax increase in the history of the city of Springfield. You know that. I'm done with this.
Alderman McMiniman.
Well, I'm not done with it. And again, Alderman Hanauer, you got an incomplete understanding of things after, what is it, six years? You understand that public works projects are not funded with monies that go to the pension. We got a separate budget for public works projects, right? You know that. So don't confuse the issue here. We've got a corporate fund that that runs operations, and we've got an infrastructure fund, Fund 95, for public works projects. Now, as far as say, the the two proposals I brought in the last two budget years did not include a tax rate increase, did they, Alderman Hanauer? They said, let's plan for what we need to do to be a responsible government. It gave us one year to get ready for a more reasonable rate of return assumption. As far as potential tax raises, yeah, you're right. I'd be in favor of something like what Peoria has done with a public safety type of real estate tax, which is a flat tax based on the square footage of the improvement. I'd be in favor of allowing our real estate taxes to creep up. I'd be in favor of what's called a real estate transfer tax, which some municipalities have. And overall, to try to create roughly, it'll take $5 or $6 million per year of additional revenue to keep us from getting deeper in debt. Now, if you feel comfortable with debt, fine, but let's, you know, unless next election, let's talk about the debt that's come under in the bean while Alderman Hanauer's been alderman. Because, yeah, we can talk about what taxes McMiniman wants to raise, but let's talk about the debt that Ralph Hanauer doesn't care about.
Well, you've been on the council for years.
You could take both of you.
I'm done.
Even past.
The bottom line is, it's the council's responsibility, and it should be a lively budget discussion coming up. So I'm looking forward to it. Alderman Gregory.
Mayor, I just want to quickly say, Chief, congratulations. I do will give you a call tomorrow. I do have a couple of young men that reached out to me, ones a football coach locally here, that is interested in really taking a hard crack at the firefighter position. So I did see that the list extended to what, the 20th? Am I correct on that?
20th is the last day to get signed up.
And I'll talk to you tomorrow.
Sounds good.
Here, their discussion on the appointment of Chief Brandon Blough. All in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The clerk will call the roll. Alderman Redpath.
Aye.
Alderman Gregory.
Aye.
Alderwoman Turner.
Yes.
Alderman Fulgenzie. He said yes. Thank you. Alderman Proctor.
Yes.
Alderwoman DeCenzo.
Yes.
Alderman McMiniman.
Yes.
Alderwoman Conley.
Yes.
Alderman Donlin.
Aye.
Alderman Hanauer.
Aye.
Ten ayes and no nays, Mayor. Thank you. And at this time, we will have the penning ceremony. Brandon's wife Tammy's here, as well as his dad, Bill Blough, who used to be a part of the fire department. So if you'd like to come forward, whoever else would like to, if your mom would like to be part of it, too.
Just wanted to say hello to Chief's father. He and I went to school together in Griffin High School years ago. Wasn't it cathedral, then?
Oh, God, no.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Chief.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is 2020-498, an ordinance authorizing the funding in an amount not to exceed $3,500,000 for the remainder of the contract term of RFP number UE19-26, a multi-year contract with GE Steam Power, Inc., for emergency boiler and equipment repairs for a total not amount not to exceed $10,500,000 for the Office of Public Utilities. Chair will entertain a motion. Plaids attendant number 2020-498 on final passage.
So moved.
And moved by Alderman Redpath. Second by Alderman Fulgenzie. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. Clerk will call the roll. Alderman Redpath.
Aye.
Alderman Gregory. Alderwoman Turner.
Yes.
Alderman Fulgenzie.
Aye.
Alderman Proctor.
Yes.
Alderwoman DeCenzo.
Yes.
Alderman McMiniman.
Yes.
Alderman Conley.
Yes.
Alderman Donlin.
Aye.
Alderman Hanauer.
Aye.
Ten ayes and no nays, Mayor. Thank you. Chair will entertain a motion, suspend the rules in place on first reading, Agenda number 2020-514, ordinance authorizing an intergovernmental agreement with the Board of Trustees of the University of Illinois Springfield for COVID-19 testing support for first responders for the fire department. Well, it says police and fire department.
So moved.
Second.
And moved in second. Any discussion? All in favors, Alderman Hanauer.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I would just ask, you know, we keep getting things right before council, and I know everybody's busy, but with with us now remotely, we've got to kind of try to stick to our rules of when ordinances need to be in to get listed on the on the docket. And again, I understand things happen, but but it just seems like every every week we have or every council meeting, we have this. And especially with us remotely, we don't see a lot of this until, you know, five minutes, 10 minutes before council, you know, half hour before council. So I would just ask, going forward, that we try to make a better effort at at getting it to the clerk's office. When's it due, Clerk Lesko?
It's it's due at 4:30 on Thursday.
Okay, so 4:30 on Thursday is the rule, so we should really try to try to push to make that. Thank you.
Yeah, we sure will. I know corporate council's down, ours is down about three attorneys, and I think we got one hired. So, yeah, we try to file those by noon on Friday. So I know everybody likes to be off Fridays, but unfortunately, we can't, we don't have that luxury. So we will do our best to make it happen, but we appreciate the councils moving this forward to first reading. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Chair will entertain motion and suspend the rules in place on first reading, Agenda number 2020-515, an ordinance authorizing acceptance and execution of grant number 173800451, in the amount of $136,727 from the Illinois Department of Public Health for funding of the AmeriCorps. in the amount of $136,727 from the Illinois Department of Public Health for funding of the AmeriCorps III and authorizing a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $160,082 for the Office of Planning and Economic Development.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved, moved by Alderman McMinim, seconded by Alderwoman DeSento. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Is there any unfinished business come before the city council? Alderwoman Turner, and then Alderwoman DeSento.
Um, I, I talked a little bit about Popular Place last week and I want to thank Public Works for, uh, going out and cleaning up the, um, all of the items and trash and everything that had been fly dumped them on Old Rochester Road. Um, however, there, there is right in the middle of the complex and you can actually see it from Old Rochester Road. There is a huge dumpster that's overflowing and there is a significant amount of trash and garbage and other things, all making a big circle all around the dumpster. It's, it's, it's a horrible eyesore, but more importantly, it's a public health issue for that entire community. I mean, it's a, it's a feeding ground for rodents, uh, raccoons, opossums and, and just vermin. And I know, and it's not the responsibility of Public Works to clean it up, but we do need to get some inspectors or somebody out there to cite the owners and make them clean it up and keep it cleaned up. I mean, if, if anyone just drives down Old Rochester Road as you turn off of Cook Street, uh, I'm sorry, as you turn off of South Grand and about halfway down, take a look, um, to the right, and you would just be appalled at that. And nobody would want to live in the middle of that. And, and, and we just, we have to get somebody out there to make the owners of that property accountable. And it's, it's been there for way too long and whatever property management they have there, I know that they see it, but they just, they leave it and then they go home to where they don't have to look at it, they don't have to be subjected to it. And like I said, it's a, it's a horrible eyesore for the city, but more importantly, it's a public health issue for that entire community, not just Popular Place, but the surrounding neighborhoods around it. So, um, if we can get somebody out there as soon as possible to take a look at it and, and do whatever citations need to be done and, you know, force the owners to take some responsibility and clean that up.
Yeah, we'll, uh, check on that tomorrow.
Thank you.
Alderwoman DeSento.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, there were two, um, shots fired incidents in Ward 6 today in very residential areas. Um, there was a murder at the, in the Wendy's parking lot last week. Um, there were shots fired incidents in Ward 8 or Ward 9 very, very recently. Um, there's obviously a rash of gun violence going on in this city. And with many of our kids home from school, still remote learning, um, they only get a, it, it might be cold outside, but they're willing to suit up and go out and play in the yard. And now we're getting to the point where they're afraid to do that, um, especially in these residential areas. And we, we have to do something. And I, we shouldn't find out about what's going on with these incidents in our wards on social media or the news, because then we can't answer questions. We have no, even if the response from the police department is just, there was a shots fired incident, we're investigating, we're investigating it, we'll follow up, but we don't get that. And we need that with these increased incidents. We have to know what's going on so we can tell people this is what's happening. And I, I don't think we know what's happening, but it's scary and people are very on edge, they're on edge anyway. And it's not getting better, it's getting worse by the day. So I just, I, I brought this up in the past and it's getting to be a, a bigger and bigger concern. And we have to do something about this.
Yeah, I don't know if, uh, Chief Winslow or Deputy Chief, uh, or Assistant Chief Scarlet's on.
Your boss, can you hear me?
Yep, yep, go ahead.
Yeah, obviously we've had the incidents with that, we think they're possibly related, we're not sure yet. We're looking into connection to anything that might have been connected between these rash we've had over the last few weeks. We do believe some of them are related. Whether they're related to the homicide, we're still looking into that as well. Uh, we did have one down in outer park today and then went over on State Street today. I believe that ended up being in the county jurisdiction. So, uh, we are looking to see if those are related. Obviously, uh, fortunately, nobody was hit today, but obviously it's something we've been working on as we move forward, uh, trying to address the gun violence in our community. Uh, there's things we do behind the scenes that the public doesn't see. I'm confident in the men and women of the Springfield Police Department that with the homicide, we're going to be able to bring some possible, uh, conclusion to this hopefully in the near future. I know they're working, uh, 24/7 on it and we're just moving as fast as we can. You know, the thing we need is again, is for the public to remind, anything you see, everything you see, please let us know. We'll definitely follow it up. Uh, you know, again, you know, uh, we'll try to share a little bit more information with the Alderwoman we can. Uh, but with that said, a lot of times we're not made aware of it because they're out there investigating. We don't find out to about it for an hour or two later, okay, or even the next morning if it happens overnight. So again, we'll try to share some of that, but again, you know, uh, it may be very vague like the Alderwoman said, but we'll see what we can do to help out on that.
Yeah, Alderman McMinim.
Yeah, I, speaking of the, the crime situation and statistics and that kind of thing and what's happening. I remember last budget season when SPD presented to the council, I particularly asked for information regarding trends, long-term trends in violence, because we don't want social media to take over the field with comments. We want responsible persons telling us what's truly going on, what trends are truly going on. Now, a year ago, Chief Winslow, you said, well, you can look, um, into our website and you can find the information you're looking for. Uh, you know, Bill McCarty doesn't tell us to look through his financial reports to come up with our own conclusions. He gives us a report every quarter at least. CWLP doesn't ask us to dig into their, uh, reports and finances to, so we can inform ourselves of what's going on. We get a regular report. So that's, I'm asking it again, Chief Winslow. Give us the leaders in this city a regular report of what's going on, because I don't want to get it from social media. I don't want to get it from some anecdotal story. I want to get it from our police chief, who can really give us a 10-year perspective, five-year perspective. Because a murder shakes up communities. Shots fired shakes up communities. And we got to get a handle on this with reliable information so that we don't jump to, jump to conclusions. And I hope you're focused on this, focused on our city, not on your future plans, but on this city. Cause we need leadership that's reliable, that's there and stay centered, focused. I hope you get the message, Chief Winslow.
Yeah, I think that's, uh, one of the reasons we got ShotSpotter and the presentation was made, but, uh, we need it more regularly. I understand that, so we'll be sure to analyze it. That's the biggest thing is how do you analyze the data that, uh, we can retrieve from ShotSpotter and the other areas. And so, uh, as we progress, that's what we'll, we'll provide.
Mayor.
Yep, Alderman Hanauer, and then Alderman McMinim.
And, and I, I appreciate the, the ShotSpotter thing, but, but the, the gangs or whoever's doing this, they're, they're going outside the, the area where the ShotSpotter is. I think that, I think that's the issue. My understanding, I, I mean, I've, I've heard kind of, uh, what, what went on with the murder. Um, and, uh, I, I, you know, it, it's unfortunate. I, I don't like, you know, that any part of our city, let alone in, in your own, in my own ward, but, um, you know, in a very, at this point, it's a, it's an extremely busy area. Um, to have that happen, you know, is, is, is not good, but, uh, um, uh, you know, the ShotSpotter is only as good as the area that you're in and we, we don't have it all over the city, nor do I think we could afford to have it all over the city. Um, but I, I do know that, you know, I thank God we have it in, in the areas we have, but, 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 you know, they're starting to, they're, the, 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 the problems are starting to happen outside of, of where the ShotSpotter, uh, is. And I just wanted to bring that up.
Yep. Alderman McMinim, then Alderwoman Turner.
Yeah, those are, those were, were my same comments. That was one of the reasons I voted against ShotSpotter, because it only covers one-tenth of our city. And, uh, we've got a very mobile, you know, automobile-type society and people can run all over the place. So I would have preferred human intelligence. I, I think ShotSpotter can be, you know, a valuable technology, but we really need, you know, undercover SPD, uh, that can get in there and tell us and, and help, uh, the detectives and, uh, make arrests happen through human intelligence. It's real critically important. So ShotSpotter only goes so far.
Alderwoman Turner.
You know, I, I think that there's a couple of things, um, at play here. I, I was in total support of ShotSpotter and I'm very happy that we have it. And, um, I think that, uh, as to Alderman McMinim's comments, ShotSpotter is not the only means of intelligence that we use to, um, to do our, to do the business that the police department does. It's one tool. It's a tool that has been very successful and I am, um, and I, and I'm supportive and I, and I'm happy that we have it. There are other things at play as well. I think that what has happened with, um, what we've seen over the last maybe year, 18 months is, is something that most of us already knew and the rest of the city is catching up. Gun violence and crime has been prevalent throughout this entire city for years and years and years. It's nothing new. The only thing new about it is that we now have social media, we now have 24-hour news and, uh, and people see it and see it in real time. But the murder that occurred recently in Ward 10, that's, that may be the first murder that's happened in Ward 10, but it's not the first incident of gun violence or crime that's happened in Ward 10, 9, 8, 7, 6, 5, 4, 3, 2, 1, anywhere. So, um, so that's, you know, I think that's where we're at with this. I, I, um, I, I, I am concerned as our most of, uh, as is everyone, um, here tonight about, uh, the uptick that we've seen, especially in, in the gun violence and, and what some may seem to think that there are some retaliatory, uh, actions. Um, as a matter of fact, I was three times this week, as I was on my way to run errands, I ran into significant roadblocks because of, of, of gun violence, um, not far from, from where I live. So it, it is getting to be more, uh, I, you know, it's, there's definitely an uptick in it and I am hopeful that we can come to, um, some resolution on it. But I, I just, you know, have to say, it's, it's not so much that it's, I think that it's now that people are realizing that we have these activities throughout our entire city and not just in wards 2 and 3. And again, ShotSpotter is a significant tool, a very good resource, but it is not the only resource and not the only tool that the Springfield Police Department is utilizing.
Alderman Redpath.
You know, uh, I was opposed to ShotSpotter, um, mainly because the, the cost of the, of system, I didn't think warranted, uh, uh, that type of, uh, product. But I know from what I hear interacting with local police departments, that it has made a little bit of a difference over there. And it's, uh, I'm, I'm more positive towards it now than I was before. But I can tell you that, uh, investigations take a long time. You don't switch on, you don't turn a switch on and say, we're going to catch the person the next day. There's a lot of things that go into it. Uh, I can tell you that the, the Springfield Police Department, the investigations unit that we have is outstanding. Um, they've made several arrests that we probably haven't even heard about. And I can tell you that, uh, the chief has got a grip on this. Um, uh, we, this was a very unfortunate situation, uh, that we probably shouldn't be talking about until the investigation's done. But I can tell you that, um, our investigators and our police officers, the guys that we have on the street are doing a great job in trying to solve these things. They know who the actors are and they know how to go after them and they know how to get this investigation brought to completion, but it takes time and you got to be patient. And there's so many different mechanisms that are, that are involved in a criminal investigation that you got to let them do their work. And, uh, I, I applaud the, the chief and I applaud the police department for how they're doing it. And I'm sure that we will bring this severe, uh, shooting to a, a close hopefully sometime soon. And, and all the related shootings, because as Alderman Turner said, uh, there's a back and forth situation that's going on and, and we know the players and they're going to come get them one of these days and they're going to, we're, we're going to get this thing cleaned up. So please give our police department time to do the investigations and to follow the leads that they get. We have a great intelligence network out there that hand, that gives us a lot of information that helps us solve these type of crimes. So please be patient with our police department.
Yeah, Alderwoman Turner.
Yeah, and you know, and I also want to say that I, I have to really give the chief, um, um, you know, uh, a lot of credit because I believe that the relationships and the communication that he has built over these past, um, several years with the community really gives the police department a, another avenue with which to, to investigate and, and, and do their work. So, um, you know, Chief Winslow really should be given a lot of credit for that. There are a lot of people that are, um, you know, that he's interacting with, that are interacting with him, that really provides, um, a lot of working, uh, information and cooperation that, that he has built up. So, uh, you know, I, 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 I really have to, you know, kind of take, take offense to, um, comment that was, that was made earlier. I, I think that, um, you know, the, the chief has really done a lot to get us to where we are now that puts us in a better position to be successful going forward.
Alderman Gregory. Alderman Gregory.
I just, I just want to just comment, I, I, I can appreciate everybody's comments. I mean, of course, you know, we, I've heard gunfire in, 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 in the communities I've been, lived in all my life, right? And those things continue to happen. So we, as a city, we, we have 200 and some odd police and they do a great job. But they, they, they're coming after the shots are fired. So I've, I've, I've challenged different organizations in my community, uh, as well as I challenge the city, is how do we look at different proactive ways to sort of prevent some of these things? Um, a lot of these guns, you're not going to the store buying these things and, you know, so, uh, a lot of things I'm sure Chief, uh, does a great job on and, and as well as his detective staff, but, but a, a, a lot to the key of reduction in, 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 in gun violence in this particular city is going to be what we do before we get there. Um, and we have a lot of work to do as we see. So thank you.
Yeah, I think, uh, and Chief could, uh, speak to this if he wants, but one of the reasons, uh, well, ShotSpotter's coming up on a year. Uh, but one of the things that benefits of it is it does show the prevalence of gunfire. As Alderwoman Turner said, it's, uh, it's been around, but this really shows the numbers to it. And that's one of the initiatives that, uh, they're looking at is how to create the report, just not with that data, but other information or intelligence that's been alluded to by everybody. So, uh, we can fulfill the request of Alderman McMinim to have, uh, you know, regular reports to, uh, really pinpoint it and get everybody, uh, on the same page with regards to the level of concern we all should have and how we can, uh, move forward to address it as a community. So I don't know if Chief Winslow wants to address that or Alderwoman Turner had a comment too.
Good morning, Happy. Go ahead, go ahead, Alderwoman.
No, I, I was just going to say that I, I agree with Alderman Gregory and I think that the entire community has a responsibility to, um, to be more proactive in, in, in how we, in- that the entire community has a responsibility to, to be more proactive in, in how we, in, in the, in the actions that we take within our community. There are a number of, of organizations that do a lot of really good work with, you know, working with different individuals and groups of individuals. And then there are a lot of organizations that are out there talking about, you know, what needs to be done, but not picking up and doing any of it. So I think that all of us have, have a collective responsibility to be very proactive in the work that we do throughout our community, and, and it, it's not just, you know, talking about what everybody else needs to do, it's what, what can we do?
Right. Chief?
And I would just add on to what Alderman Turner said. It takes the whole community working together to prevent gun violence, and after it occurs, it takes the community working with the police department to gather the valuable information to share. One thing that makes these type of investigations difficult is when you don't have a victim and you don't have a suspect. Today's incident on Outer Park, I got no victim, no suspect, and we got vague descriptions of cars when people heard the shots that they looked. Obviously, we are checking those areas for cameras and other things, and we're gonna do the best we can to try to solve that, but we have to have that cooperation coming forward. And we have field, you know, a lot of times we'll have a, a suspect, but we can't prove beyond a reasonable doubt, and we can't get them charged. So, we're doing everything we can. The men and women have been working nonstop on this uptick on shootings, and we will continue to do so, and with the homicide being our highest priority right now. I can't tell you, I think every one of my detectives, including my property detectives, have touched this, and they are working hard, and I have faith that they'll get there. And we're doing this while we're 30 officers down right now, 30 to 35 officers down, and we're still doing this, and we're still doing a damn good job, and we're gonna continue to work on it, but we will do our best to bring those accountable for these incidents, not just the homicide, but all of them that we can, to justice. But, again, right now, we are dealing with something with our younger folks in our community who have a beef with each other, and they're going back and forth.
Any other questions or comments on this topic? Any other unfinished business? Alderman Fulgenczi? Oh, you're muted.
I'd like to ask if there's been any movement on our, my request for how we can sell liquor out of a drive-up window. I know there's a lot of bars and a lot of restaurants in town that have beer and wine going out of date, and it'd be helpful to find out how they can use it.
Yeah, I don't know if you wanna, Corporation Council will give an update or try to help with that.
Alderman, we did look into that, and the city's policy and ordinances currently do not allow for the sale of liquor through drive-up windows. There was a variation, we did go back and check, and I do recall that we had talked about that, and I did go back and check, and there is allowance for restaurants and so on to be able to do packaged liquor for carryout, but we have not allowed this, through the normal process, have not allowed people being able to obtain liquor through drive-up windows. That's been a long-time policy, and our ordinances do not allow for that. However, that's something that we can look out further if it's a matter of an emergency issue, but we've not received really complaints regarding restaurants' inability to have carryout, because we've allowed them, through the, through the Liquor Commissioner's rulings, we've allowed them to be able to carry out package, you know, unopened with food. And the purpose of that was to try to make it a little easier, given the terrible circumstances that are currently impacting everyone. But the policies of the city, the ordinances, don't allow for liquor being served out of a, a drive-up.
And I think that came about with concern from council members. I mean, this was administrations ago, that's where they prohibited it. But if, during the time of COVID, if council members feel that we should allow restaurants during this time period to allow packaged liquor, that's something we can do in the short interim, but it would probably take council action to do that. So, we can entertain that if, if, if it's, there's strong enough support to move that direction for the period of, that we're under.
Yeah, I thought at a ruling under one of your emergency orders originally, maybe six, eight months ago, that allowed that, but maybe I'm wrong.
No, that was, that's for carryout, but not on the drive-through window. Is that correct, Councilman?
Yes, in other words, again, trying to be helpful, the current tavern and restaurant license do not allow packaged liquor sales, someone being able to come in, except for a double A. What the, what, what did occur was because of the COVID situation with restrictions of people being able to have seating, different things like that, and we're going towards carryout. That rule was relaxed to allow both the establishments to be able to sell carryout packaged liquor. There was no addressing a drive-up window. It was just for people that were coming to pick up food, you know, coming inside, or if they're carrying it outside, you know, if a car pulls up and somebody carries it out to them. So there was no, that I recall, there was no specific issue that came up about serving the packaged liquor through a, a drive-up.
So any, any packaged liquor that is sold has to be out of the front of the building after they come inside, not through a drive-up?
That, that is my understanding, that the practice has been, has been utilized by the restaurants. I don't think I've seen a complaint or any write-up where there has been either a complaint or an issue about packaged liquor being sold through a drive-up window. I'm not sure how many restaurants have drive-up windows and a combination with a liquor license, like a Subway that has a drive-up, or a, a different restaurants, McDonald's, different ones like that, that do not have, you know, a drive-up window as opposed to a, a corner pub, or a, a brick house, or other restaurants where you would go in, or maybe they might even carry it out to you. If you pulled up, then they might bring it out to you.
If there's no strong objection, we can come forward with the ordinance that would allow that with the purchase of food. That's what it would have to be tied, otherwise you're gonna be like a liquor store, and we don't want that. Alderwoman Turner?
It, it, it seems, I guess I'm confused, because I, I think that there's the opportunity for establishments to do that now. The only difference is, instead of coming to the drive-up window to get it, there's curbside pickup where someone will bring it out to you, or you would go in to pick it up, and you would get it then and, and come out. So, I don't understand why it has to be specific to a drive-up window. I think that, I, I think that that opens up, opens up a whole, a can of worms that I don't know that we want to open up, because I, I think that, I don't think that there's any hindrance to any establishment now that, you know, because there's, like I said, there's curbside pickup, and, and people can go in and, and, and get the items. I don't know why it has to be specifically out of a drive, drive-up window.
Alderman Hanner? Oh, you're muted. Uh, you're muted.
That was an operator error there. With the issues that we've had tonight with seeing, you know, handouts, things like that, slideshows, I would ask that we get Joe Bonasina's group to, to kinda take a look and see if there's anything we need to upgrade in order to make this work. I, I know it is very frustrating sitting here and not being able to see presentations, things like that, and it's, it's not to, you know, this is all still revolving pretty much, and, and we don't know how long we're gonna be here. I would rather be back in, in, I think it'd be great if we could all get back into the chamber sometime soon, but I think we just need to have Joe's group look, look into, see if there's something we need to upgrade. It would be great if we could look into some type of a remote voting system to where we have all our documents on a tablet or whatever, and we can vote that way as well, so that, that we, we don't have to do roll-call votes every, every, every vote, you know, so I don't know if that's something that can be looked at, just thought I'd bring that up.
Yeah, we'll check that out, as well as the other item Alderman Fulgenczi brought up. Alderman McMinimum? Oh, you're muted too. You have to unmute yourself, please.
State law requires roll, roll-call vote when we do these kinds of, uh, remote meetings, where, where we do these Zoom meetings. The, the governor's emergency ruling did not take away the requirement to do a roll-call vote when we, when we meet like this, take a statute change at the state level.
Thank you. Any other unfinished business? Couple items, the utility relief program and the grant program will be out this week. The grant program will be announced, but the utility relief will be offered, they're trying to fine-tune the online application for that. And this Saturday, there's a drawing for the Capital City Takeout Challenge, that's to support restaurants. The grand prize drawing will be at the Lincoln Hernan Law Office, the Visitor Center for Springfield Convention Visitors Bureau, at, from 2 o'clock to 3 o'clock Saturday. Alderman Repath?
Mayor, I talked to you about some people that applied for the grant that we thought weren't qualified, did, were you able to go over that?
Yeah, Director Yezel's on, I don't know if she wants to pop on here, but, yeah, we did check on that one in particular, and they did not qualify.
Thank you.
Because of the home base aspect of it. Alderwoman Turner, and then Director Yezel?
So, I, I got a number of, excuse me, I got a nu, a number of, of inquiries from places that were like social clubs and those, those kinds of entities that were wanting to know if they would qualify. And I know that someone else, I, I don't know if it was Alderman Repath, but someone else raised that issue, and I, I don't, and, yeah, and I don't remember ever hearing...
The lake clubs, the lake clubs doors are considered social clubs, I guess, and I, that's why I was asking about the clubs.
Yeah, so did, did, did we ever get a response about that?
The, I know the utility side, it's the veterans organizations that have a commercial kitchen, but nonprofits, I think that's how they're classified, did not...
So, so you have to have a, so you have to have a commercial kitchen, is that the tipping point?
Well, for veterans associations, the tipping point originally was nonprofits is geared towards businesses.
Right.
And so we allowed veterans organizations, like you have the, you know, the American Legion, they have a, you know, they have, it's a business that they operate, uh, VFW, I think, that they operate a kitchen on a regular basis for the public.
Okay, so what about, what about those organizations that may not have, may not have a commercial kitchen? I'm, I'm, I'm thinking about clubs, organizations like the Elks, or the American Legion, or those, those types of entities.
Yeah, I think the, how it was, well, the veterans organizations were made that way because they, they were running a kitchen, that's why we made the exception. So it depends if they're on a nonprofit status, Director Yezel can go over the, on the grant for the businesses, Doug Brown can go over the electric side for that rebate, but that's my understanding, no nonprofits, with the exception of the American Veterans Organizations that have a commercial kitchen. I think that's how it was worded.
But, but Mayor, what, what Alderman Turner's, I think, saying is, the Elks Club is a nonprofit, and, and there's like the, I think, I don't know if the Eagles Club's still out there, or?
Right.
Mayor, go ahead. We said no private organization, so if you were a private membership organization, that was what disqualified several of those.
So what if you, what if you, and I know this is getting down in, in the weeds on it, but what if, what if you are a private organization like the Elks Club, however, you have activities that are, that would be open to, open to the public, and other, and, and you have community activities that are open to the public?
Um, well, when we did it, we just assigned it and said if you were a private, private club, private membership, that was disqualified.
Yeah, but then, but then the mayor just said, yeah, but then the mayor just said that veterans organizations that would be private clubs, if they have a commercial kitchen, are eligible because they are open to the public. So these are organizations that are private organizations, but they have community activities that are open to the public.
I will confirm tomorrow for you exactly how, how the, that, how the final decision on that, I will get to you. In fact, I'll send something to the entire city council on that tomorrow.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Yeah, remember how it originally started was small businesses, it was really geared towards restaurants and bars shutting down, and that was the intent, is to help them out and help out as many small businesses as possible. So we did get complaints, I know specifically by the American Legion, because they served lunch on a regular bas, basis. So essentially, there were restaurants shut down, and so that's why we opened it up on the utility side. It was never opened up on the grant side under OPED, but on the utility side, we went ahead and made that decision based on that similarity with the restaurant operation with the veterans organizations. And the two specifically that reached out, one was the VFW on Old Jacksonville Road, and the other one was on Sangamon Avenue. But there may have been others, I don't know. But that's why we opened that up.
Mayor, if I might just explain even a little bit further?
Sure.
Some, some of these organizations, also, we had to go qualifying because KIRZAC funds had certain parameters, the KIRZACs that we got from the state, and then also CDBG had specific qualifications. So, we're excited, we'll be announcing a bunch of recipients tomorrow. We still have some complete incomplete applications that we're working on, but by the end of the week, we should have everyone announced.
And we're gonna, have we absorbed even after we go through the incomplete, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, can I ask a question?
No, yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
Ask after, after we get done with this, if we don't absorb what all that about, or do you plan to use and, and all of the, uh, uh, allowed it funding for this purpose?
Yes, Alderman, we, we have every intention of giving 124 grants out, yes.
All right, do we have any thoughts on down the line, trying to go after some more for our businesses?
That's a discussion actually the mayor and I just had earlier today, so, yes.
All right.
I, I will say that, as you know, and as several, I've talked to several Aldermen, a lot of the businesses had difficulty because of the stringent requirements that we have, not only from, for CDBG funding, but also for the KIRZAC funding of doing the, you know, getting all the requirements taken care of and answering the questions, but I do want you to know, I'm gonna brag on my staff, because as you know, I've been out of commission kind of for the last couple of weeks with my mother, and my staff has picked up applications from businesses, they've stayed late, they've called, they've been on the phone day and night. I think we've done, I, I'm gonna brag on them, because they've done it, taking care of, of the businesses, trying to do everything they can simply could to help them get this money. We want this money out.
Absolutely.
Any other questions on those topics? Any other new business come before the council? Do want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, a Happy Hanukkah, and a Kwanzaa, so hopefully you enjoy it, and then, but we'll be seeing each other on the 29th, if not before, right? I think it's 29? Is that the next meeting?
Yes, Mayor.
So is there a motion for adjournment? Moved by Alderman Repath, seconded by Hanauer, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Pose, say nay. We're adjourned, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.